Call the regular council meeting at City Hall to order this May 15, 2018 at 7:00 PM. Ray, let you provide the blessing for us, please.
That's great. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come before you again as Town Council. Lord, we thank you for the representation that we have, the time that they put in to prepare for the meetings and the decisions that they have to make. We just thank you, Lord, and we ask that you would bless them and that as they discuss issues tonight, that they'd be able to come to the consensus that would be in accordance with your perfect will. So, in your son's name, we pray.
Amen. Thank you, Ray. Thank you, Ray. All right, additions to the agenda. Under new business, the property by the laundromat.
I need a 15-minute executive session on elected personnel, employee performance.
In addition to that as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Point of information, the new business property is already on my agenda.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second, a motion and a second by Brian Sanders to add the property by the laundromat and a 15-minute executive session to discuss non-elected personnel. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carries three oh. Citizens' comments? Are there any citizens' comments this evening?
Yes, sir. It has to do with the grocery store. And Jeff Williamson is at the top of the list as far as making it work. And he is blatantly not making it work. I mean, he is holding up, if there's eight days of rainy weather, let it be a half day to cover the eight days. He's held up another eight days at least. Whether it's man from construction, or the engineer, or Chase Golly, or Kansas Dirt, or the plumbers or electricians. If you can't get the lead man to be 100% for it, he needs to be gone. And that's where it's at.
I know we've had some busy days and setbacks, but I've also entertained some comments. And so, we'll be, we'll be addressing that.
Okay, it's costing the city money?
Absolutely.
Because the electric meter isn't spinning at the new facility. And the sooner it's spinning, the sooner you're in the red, in the black. So, it just, it beats up all the employees if lead man isn't for it. So, just make sure it's addressed. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments.
Yep.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens' comments this evening?
Okay, yes, there is. For pool, swimming pool. I just need to see about getting approved Assistant Manager Allison Smith for rehire this year, along with lifeguards Quincy Smith, Katrina Brown, Carissa Brown, Bree Meyer, Melissa Williamson, and Shayla Garcia. And then we'll have a new hire Katie Burke this year. We usually pay for their training to be recertified and certified. Due to our pool issues, it could be possible we have to go swim somewhere else depending on our water temperature at the time of training. So, but that's where we look right now for this year. So, if I, if you guys have any questions or concerns, otherwise after those, we'll get them started on your paperwork and keep going on.
I think we had to see if that center seal wasn't good that we put in, and they had to drain the pool and redo that seal.
Yeah, we went to go clean it, and that piece they put in there, it came out. And so, they drained it down. He put the caulking in, and it takes a week to dry, he said. And then, once that's set, he said, then they'll refill it. But we were losing a lot of water once that came out. So, what it has caused us more problems down the road. So, hopefully, this is a fix for this year. But with long-term, we're gonna have to look at some permanent things, I think, so.
Okay. Did we decide that we didn't have to, we didn't, it was supposed to go through Jeb as far as hiring? You see a little part on?
Hiring has to come through council.
We have to make the motion?
Like, the other stuff that could go through, like David or Jeb, hiring needs to come through council.
Very good. Okay. Can we get your list of names, please, so she can have those?
Pretty much the same as what I can usually have as far as employees.
It is. The only thing, uh, Kev, let's see, Bree Meyer will bump up because she's been here a year, so she'll bump up to the 8:25. Katie Burke will start it, I believe, at 7:25, whatever we normally start them out as. I'd like to see a quarter raise for the rest of them if possible, but I also understand the budget's tight right now with the pool stuff, so.
The motion to hire those, I may have hired the ones that she recommends. Would you read them off for the record, please?
Quincy Smith, Katrina Brown, Carissa Brown, Bree Meyer, Melissa Williamson, Shayla Garcia, Allison Smith, and new hire Katie Burke, and Allison to be the Assistant Manager.
Along with the training fees as well?
Along with the training fees. Do you want to make sure Bree Meyer's bumped up to 8:25?
Yeah. Okay, yeah. Yeah. Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second to hire the swimming pool employees. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, carries four oh.
Okay, all right, super. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Are there any other citizens' comments? Ray?
For your information and also for action, I'm working with Nick Garcia and the St. John Hudson Rec. Commission, who are gonna be having Hot Summer Nights again this summer. Right now, they're scheduled for Saturday nights this year, not Friday nights, June 16th, July 14th, August the 18th. I like to use the square for that. So, that's, that's number one. But I need permission for that. But we are working with the Rec. Commission this year.
Are you gonna be blocking off any streets?
If I need to, I'll come to you at that time, or before that happens. But this is, we've got bounce houses scheduled. I've got those scheduled, and we've got other activities that we'll be trying to do. And if we need a street blocked off, we'll, we'll ask for it, at least the meeting before.
Sure.
Yeah. And secondly, I had contacted Jamie. Our church, Eden Valley Church and First Southern Baptist Church is having Vacation Bible School this, this summer, July 22nd, 23rd, 24th, and 25th. And we would like to be able to use the square for activities. There, we're using the annex for our opening assembly and Bible stories will be, we would like to use the park for activities, which would be crafts, games, food, there we go, type of thing, to use the park for those three days for that. It would be Sunday afternoon and Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday for three and a half hours during the day.
Counsel, I have any issues with any of that?
Yeah.
I'd just say that work with Jamie to make sure that, that the schedule's open for that, so that we're not conflicting with other things. And, you know, make sure that this is, that this is your guys' project, that it's your project. Because I know there's been some things that have went on with other types of groups that land on her outside of. So, I want to make sure that if your group's committed, that it's your group's thing that's going on.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're working on it. The two churches, we're working on it. And, and we'll have everything taken care of, cleaned up, always have, always will.
Let me know the dates, and I can get it in, like, the newsletters, and we can start pushing the dates for Hot Summer Nights, so there's a little bit more publicity about what's going on.
Yeah, that's, I'm on, the other thing is, is that on Friday of this week, if not on the last day of school, there'll be flyers that'll go out with all of the students on Hot Summer Nights, and also on our Vacation Bible School, just to let people know ahead of time that these are coming up. And it's community-wide for any of those events, and, and get more information out. I also get with you on trying to use the barrel out in the corner, or out in the square, or the four-way stop here, the barrel or something of that nature. But I'll work, I'll work with Jamie on that.
It's nice to see the park getting used for things. I like that. We like to see the park getting used for events and things. It's nice, because not that many people take advantage of it.
Kind of like volunteering and organizing and stuff like that, right? Kids like the lot.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good. Are there any other citizens' comments this evening? No other comments, we'll move on to the consent agenda to approve minutes of the regular council meeting of May 1st, 2018. Also appropriation ordinance 05-15-18, an amount of $47,286.07. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second by Brian Sanders. Any other discussion?
On that transmission, that was just for the, that wasn't really for the transmission.
It was, it was the, Marshall had a better understanding of the computer side of the transmission.
I think it was a computer module that runs the whole entire transmission. And I would imagine that included some labor as well.
Right.
Because they had to haul it great big. My county hauled it up there for us.
And I think they had, you know, county hauled it in for us, and then they had to bring a technician from out of state to work on it. Because it's the old state training.
Yeah. Doesn't have a labor cost on there, doesn't show it.
Control module.
$2,772.
Yeah.
Looks like maybe general operation, six, which is probably the.
That would be the labor.
Six sixty-three.
And then that would be the, with the core, and then the core credit, and then shop supplies. Yeah. So, I mean, the part was $2,772.
And he, Jeff had spoke to me about it, and he said, you know, I'd have, gotta have it. And I said, I, I, you know, I understand what's going on. The fact that it's broken down, I don't understand the control module, electrical side of that transmission stuff. But I said, you know, something like that, it's bound to get fairly expensive. With everything we've got going on, and cleaning things up, we need to get things fixed and have, have everything that we do need. I mean, I feel like it was.
Just drew a red flag out, you know?
Right, right. I felt like it was a justified expense in that sense, that we knew there was something wrong. And we did let him know to go ahead and take it up and see what was going on. And we went ahead and got it taken care of.
Do I need a special motion for that, since it's about this meeting on that, or just?
It would normally have to be approved.
So, I need an extra motion for that?
Paid for. Has it been paid for?
That's in this appropriation.
So, do we need to add that in here?
Yes, please.
Yes. Yeah, the exact amount, the 30.
Is that right?
Where's our folder? Did it stand more down here? Okay. That motion on that, are you correct? But that motion buys for like a second.
No, I said.
Like a second.
Oh, it did?
But with the addition of the 350. Okay. So, with the addition of 350222 in voice, with the transmission parts on the dump truck.
Right.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, carries four oh. Moving on to housing violations. 105 South Prairie.
I don't think Jeff has been looking at any of the properties. Jerry's been in full contact with us throughout the process of him cleaning up the property they've moved in. We had a little bit of issues with water, but he said tonight that he, he thinks we got that under control finally. So, I mean, I personally haven't been by the property.
I have.
Jeff never got me pictures or anything, so.
I have been by 105 South Prairie. You know, we had a little bit of concern with the roof. That hasn't necessarily been addressed yet, because they've been busy with the other things that have been going on, and water and all of that. Dumpster outside is full. Things are getting repaired.
I've called, I've called that guy three times, he won't answer as long.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, we're, you know, there, there's progress being made on the property, in my opinion.
I've got the windows replaced, and I've got the gates redone, rebuilt the fence. I'm in the process, the last two days, I've been working on the yard and trying to keep my business going all at the same time.
Sure.
I think it's fine. I don't see.
I'd say review it again.
Yeah. It's up to you guys, man.
They're living in it.
Yeah. I think we can be done with it.
I mean, I don't know. You want to review it again? You want to call it down or not?
I mean, I'm fine with it being taken off, and I mean, it's fine.
It's here.
Made an attempt, and if you've moved into it, I'm gonna assume that if you're living in it, I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion, or just a consensus?
No, I think consensus is just.
Counsel, it's okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to 104 Southwest Street. I've been by the property, I'm sure everybody has. Busy street. After we had talked about it the last time, I saw slight progress on it with removing and awning and cleaning up a bunch of stuff outside. Outside is cleaned up for the most part. That roof is still in complete disrepair as well.
Is this the house in the little store?
Yes.
Yes. I've, I've been in contact with the lady, and she's now in the process of getting a dote, or a backhoe, and a bogcat ordered, rented, so I can go in there, come and get the permits. We're gonna demolish the house. If the store's savable, she wants to save it. If not, we're gonna tear it all down. She wants to put some kind of portable buildings on there, insulate them, sheet rock them, and I guess make it like a little house, if the city's gonna okay it. And she is wanting to turn, for sure to turn the house down.
What's counsel on? I think we had 60 days. We extended it because of this meeting, or a few, by a few days, so 60 days to review it. And I think we had the expectation, the day expectation was that we wanted a roof on it.
I, I went over there and inspected it, and I told her, the roof is gonna cost more than what the house was worth.
Right.
And that's why she's to come up with that idea, and go ahead and just tear it down.
Counsel open to?
They're gonna tear it down, yeah.
I mean, pending the house being torn down, to that effect, review it once again, or what?
What's the house? I mean, what's on the south side of it?
Yeah, that's the house part.
Because, I mean, even the store, the whole thing, to me, it looks like it's in shape.
Right.
I don't, I don't think a person can spend the money to fix either one of them.
I'm trying to talk around and go ahead and level on both of them. I was scared even walking the store.
To me, the options are to have us knock the whole down, or the whole thing down for them, or they knock it down and save some money on their tax roll. I just don't think it's saving the amount of the structure. I mean, even if we went ahead and proceeded, like we were gonna knock it down, we couldn't get to it till fall time, so that would give them the fall time to take care of it. But to me, it's none, it's not.
Well, there's, it's been a struggle with that building anyway, getting contact on it. We finally got contact on it. Regardless of what the issues are today, the person hasn't appeared. I get things come up, you know, or at least a, at least a phone call in.
We had contact with her.
Today?
Yes.
Okay.
It wasn't about her not contacting.
Okay.
Well, just not for sure how much roof we get.
You know, you said for sure the house is coming down?
And she wants it down. She wants the house out, that's for sure. Just however, wherever she's wondering, whenever she can get the equipment in for me. I don't know what her financial funds are like, so.
I say we just put it on the list to be, all of it to be removed, and if they remove it before we do, then so be it.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna tell you, about eight o'clock every morning, you can drive by there, and there's at least two or three skunks that go in underneath the house. I've seen them.
I've saw, I've seen a couple, about, about 14 pounds, big joggers.
So, I mean, if they're underneath the house, underneath the foundation, they're probably in the house and in the building and everything else, and I just don't think you'll ever save any, any part of it.
John, what's our process here? If we want to move forward with tearing it down?
Well, it's kind of what I indicated last time, what if I got next. Counsel looking at it themselves is okay, but I really need a report from the city staff as to the progress and conditions. That report needs to be included in the body of the minutes, and it's not sufficient, and it just comes from you guys.
Sure.
Jeff can't be both the witness and the fact finder.
Sure.
If you're saying you're not gonna get to it till fall, and it's gonna be cheaper all around, she just does it herself. But on the Second Street properties, I mean, I asked for a list of stuff so that we can get back to the owner about what it takes to bring those properties into compliance back in April. I haven't received one of those yet, so I'm not sure if anything's been done there on those properties.
So, what are you saying, does Jeff go look at it and come and show us pictures and whatnot the next meeting?
Jeff, what should happen is each one of those meetings, he gives a presentation as the condition of the property. Now, like he talked about at the last meeting, he can't testify to things outside his knowledge based on electricity and those kinds of things. Obvious structural defects are different than defects on, on the wall, but he needs to create some kind of, something.
Has he been taking pictures? I mean, I've seen it.
I mean, at one point, I thought he said he was gonna take weekly pictures of all this property.
Yeah, I guess I haven't seen it.
So, what are you saying, what are we doing there?
I think you just have to give us time to do what she's gonna do. I'd like to know personally, hear it from her, that if she comes in and says, I'm gonna tear it all down, I have no problem, the city just, well, doing it if she doesn't. I mean, to me, to her, she's admitting that it's not what she's saving.
Right.
So, you give them time, how long, how much time to tear it down?
Yeah.
Pending.
Is she waiting for equipment to be available, or is she waiting, she doesn't have any other issues?
I'd say we're.
She's trying to figure out, where she, she's trying to figure out who's got it available, what, what she needs.
Review it again next meeting, and ask for her to figure?
I gotta go by her house when I leave here anyways, I don't know what's going on.
What do you think, can he say?
I mean, she, she should have been here, this is the end of her 60 days, wasn't it?
Yep.
And if it's that important to somebody, they would have showed up.
Well, she's at home, her dad would have busted up here, busted wide open, her dad got a big old garage, so.
That's where I stand on that. It's just like you said, or see, you give them enough roof, I mean, at some point, you're gonna have to pull it back in.
I'm of the opinion that we give the woman another 30 days, until the next meeting, at the very least. And let her know that she needs to be here, so we can hear it directly from her. So, that's my opinion on that. I'd almost rather just have the city's position, have them tear it down, ease me.
Well, it won't happen in two weeks.
Yeah, it's not gonna happen, so.
And if we don't have any pictures of it, I mean, can we even really move forward on it other than extend it?
Yeah, I mean, I don't necessarily need pictures. I, I need him to testify as the condition of the property. But you guys can picture it yourself, okay? But somebody needs to provide some kind of evidence as to the condition of the property.
Sure.
You guys can't provide your own evidence, and then based on the evidence you provide to yourself, make a decision.
Right, right.
We're not gonna get anything, be able to do anything until next meeting anyway, correct? Yes, no, maybe go.
I'd say we need to, we need to, I will speak with Jeff and tell him he needs to get over there and inspect it, and have a report ready for the next meeting.
Right.
So that we can act on it.
I mean, it's gonna be a lot more efficient if, if all these properties are done at the same time. And, 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 like I said, I've not heard anything about the Second Street properties. I don't know if Doris is, she's still, what it's like.
Yes. I just don't know for how much longer. I don't know how long her fill-in term is.
We just like, Dakota, like you said, does this have Jeff see, he needs to take pictures and see what he has to say about it for next meeting. And then we'll go from there.
Yeah. It's the only thing we can do, so.
I'd just leave 104 Southwest on the agenda for next meeting.
Just to have her ducks groomed, tell them, you have this many days, then we need to be ready when they can.
We'll have her be at the June 5th meeting.
Do you need anything special on that, other than just? All right, moving on to Department head and committee reports. We're gonna put Lisa down for time, she'll be here a little bit later. Moving on to Police Chief Adam Saylor.
The only thing I've got this evening is Charlie's last shift with us, and he'll be moving on.
I appreciate the reception at the cell the other day. Everybody got a chance to go by or not.
He's only missed, he's a good call.
Certainly, really nice. Nice to have that for him. Appreciate that, chief.
Yeah, that's all I got.
Anything for Adam? Okay, moving on, Mr. Fire Chief.
I don't have anything.
Well, you're perfect today. Appreciate that. And City Clerk, Jamie.
I'm not perfect.
Because we still just, Angie, like you.
So, first off, we have nine days till Jubilee, so I know everyone's so excited about that.
These ladies have been working their tails off.
Um, I don't remember, I know we had kind of discussed some of these pictures, but I just want to update you. Doris has come in and given me copies of two more houses that she has sent letters to from the county. I'm to the point where I'm just gonna send another letter following from the city saying, you have this many days, and then you're gonna start getting fined, kind of like the first one. But, I mean, this is gonna be starting a whole new process again.
Sure.
So, it's the 112 South Prairie, and that was some of the electrical.
Well, we reviewed last time.
Yeah. And then the 401 East Fourth, which that was an issue, I believe, when I first came around. They came and did a little bit of work on the corner. They came and did a little bit of work, and then everything was okay, and now I don't think it's been touched since they did the work again, and there's been several complaints. It's on the corner of Fourth and Pearl.
Right side.
Yeah, and it's at Anamnus. So, I, I mean, she has a word of a page here of stuff wrong with the house.
Property's been in disrepair for as long as I've been alive.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty filthy, but.
So, she's basically saying that. So she's basically saying that this property is difficult.
I mean, it would start the process again on these, these couple houses that need...
She's going under the health code bill instead of the environmental code, the nuisance code, which is kind of what we read on the other stuff. So really what needs to happen is it's just down under both.
What's that?
We're just gonna have to do it under both. I mean, she's looking at it from the perspective of whether the property's... Can we live in what's acceptable? And ours is kind of looking at it from the perspective of it being a nuisance, meaning in the highest order of nature.
So this just, we need her to update these letters for us and this will be sufficient?
No, no, I use hers to prepare the resolution. Cause there's a lot of overlap. The process on the nuisance code could be easier than it is under that health code.
That right there's enough for me to tear it down.
Is that the one where she walked in and said, "Oh, pizza?"
Yep.
In the fridge. Yeah, I was in there when the fridge got opened.
It hasn't changed since the last time we reviewed it.
They were from out of town.
Three or four.
They did a little bit of work, I think, on the outside.
That was just cosmetic.
A few eastern siding got made.
I tried to find a number.
John's got all that.
Well, our first, the first complaint we had was in here and I tried to find a number to just kind of make contact with the property owner and say, "Hey, you know, we're already getting complaints. Can we please do something?" But I couldn't even find a number, so pretty sure they got a week left.
I believe they wanted fifteen thousand for that or something.
I don't remember. I just know they came out on weekend and removed a tree or the branches or something and then put a sign in the window.
Send her letters, whatever you do, move on.
Man, doing, oh, speaking of Jubilee, I don't know where my sign up sheets are. I'm missing some time slots for my information booth and I thought it would be a great opportunity for council to...
City Attorney.
I'm gonna be wishing I was on vacation. If you guys would be up for hanging out at the information booth for one of my hour time slots.
Sure you would.
Can you fellows dedicate an hour?
I'm dedicating a lot of time already on Saturday.
Yeah, Marshall can be off the hook because he's helping me with my tires.
Oh, okay, that's right.
And I've got all the fire department.
Okay, yep, sign up sheet, he's good. What about Mark, Mr. Christie? I know you're already roped, I know you're already roped into something, problem.
No.
I'm roped in all my...
I'm busy as well, fellows. Cooking breakfast, that's most important job.
So I have one time slot from six to seven, one from seven to eight, two from eight to nine on Friday. And then Saturday morning, I have nine to ten, two open from eleven to twelve and two open from twelve to one and one open from one to two. You're telling me.
You said a few.
There, but there's a fair page full of people's names.
Yeah, I already have, I have my normal ones that have signed up.
Sit there and sell tickets and give them schedules.
I'll have to check my schedule. I'll let you know.
Is your wife's name on there? You could sign her.
I mean, it's just an option. You don't have to do it, but I thought maybe you guys getting out there could...
She's trying to get you some good PR, boys.
I need a lot of them. Most of them know where I'm at.
Jamie, are you gonna put the buy sickles together?
One of them's already put together.
How many you got?
Two. Just one to go. Just on my list.
Well, I can do it for you.
We have, we have.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
What else?
I kind of think that's it. We're doing it though.
Okay. Help with your other projects in the square, around the square if we get to them.
Oh, like tomorrow?
Yeah, is it tomorrow?
Tomorrow, I'm, I've gathered a group of people together to help me fix the landscape a little bit, I guess. David, David, I talked to David a little bit. I brought it up to East Aye just with his business aspect of it and he kind of gave me some direction. And I know the guys are really busy doing other things that they need to be doing, so I have my pride committee that I think four or five people have already volunteered. We're gonna take some time in the next couple of nights to just try to get that looking a little bit better and get that darn grass out of there. It's...
And the flower beds.
And the flower beds, yeah, not all of the grass.
Well, I told her, I used my trailer. I'm gonna see if I can get it to fit, my dump trailer, fit between the...
That east side, probably that east side, I guess. They've already got it to fit. It's pretty wide. It's too wide. Even up to an entrance would be...
We'll figure it out. I repainted the front railing. I repainted the stuff over at the Dylan's building. The guys put up some curtains. The doors are kind of falling off, so we need to figure something out for the doors. Pam's in there doing the backdrop. And then I have a couple more blackboards over there I need to paint. And then if I'm feeling very adventurous, I'm gonna chip off this paint up out front and repaint the front of the city office. But my list is very long and my days are numbered, so we'll see. We'll get there.
I'd also spoke to Dave to piggyback on some of that stuff downtown about getting the, you know, the painting done around the square as far as like parking stalls. I figure they probably haven't been done in probably six years or so. They haven't been painted. I know they've done crosswalks and things like that, but he said, "Well, they were working on the machine" and he said, "Get a couple people together and take care of that or four inch roller brushes." I got, I got more than enough time. Just makes downtown look better and that's what we're showcasing is our town and that's the last little, you know, that's, that's the charm that we have. We need to take care of that. This is the perfect time to really showcase it, so.
Yeah, I told Dave, Jamie, but thanks for getting all that, making it the bed sheets, making it look a little bit nicer.
Yeah, we tried, yeah, we tried cleaning the, where those boards are in the windows, but we couldn't get them cleaned, so I just threw a fresh coat of black paint on it and I think it made it look really good. There's a couple boards on the west side I haven't got to. I'm trying to let my son burn heal.
We've heard a lot of good comments about it. I know I have.
So, we'll get there. I think that's it. If anything, it can wait.
No Jeff this evening, but the only thing that he had really talked to me about was the dump truck. They were out today working on digging out the electric conduit out at the grocery store, trying to get that fixed and buried a little deeper. So it's out of the way and doesn't get hit again. So they're moving along as far as trying to get everything done and they don't have enough hands to get it done right now since that time of year. Moving on to City Attorney John Beverlin.
I have not received any response to my letter related to the city park. And I have two calls into Mr. Robinson since the last meeting. I've not heard back from him. I will just keep bugging him.
I spoke with one of the commissioners the other day just to update everybody and he had no idea about the information that John had presented to us about the court cases and things that basically stated there isn't any issue needing that over. And so he said he would be putting in a phone call to the county attorney to figure out what's going on. And I said, "I'd be more than happy to share my packet with you if you needed it," so.
Well, I sent that to the county clerk, so.
She acted like she didn't. I asked her, cause I had actually talked to her today.
See, I wonder if the way they got delivered, because it was to him, if they just delivered it to his county attorney.
I knew they'd like to get it tomorrow morning.
And I, I don't know, I think that may be the only time that we can use in town, so I'll try them again.
Yeah. I know they had come up with a solution of maybe doing police or whatever and I said, "Well, with the new information that we had recovered," I, I kind of spoke. I thought the way counsel would probably speak as far as we want to know what's going on before we commit to anything. We want to be able to do the best, best thing for this situation, so.
Related to, where else is it? Snake Creek and GMD Five, I did talk to Carolyn. And Carolyn and I decided that maybe the best course of action, of course, there's kind of two positions that can be taken. One of them could be to challenge those involved, to be a little more aggressive in response to what's going on. Or the other solution would be to participate kind of in the motion making process, so to speak. But she thought maybe, and I kind of agreed, that it'd be in our election year, maybe the best course of action is just to go to the governor, running for reelection. I talked to, or attempted to talk to John Donnelly, who is the law school classmate of mine, who's actually the lobbyist for GMD Five. I didn't realize that they'd hired somebody. Used to be working for KLA. And it's the end of session, so I've probably taken a lot of lead off. He has not returned my phone calls either. I don't know how, I mean, my thought is that US GMD Five to be, to almost be more aggressive in their responses and not attempt to work things out, so to speak. It is a, a, an agency issue, an agency that would be really under the control of the governor's office. It hasn't worked to the level of it being challenged in court, but it doesn't sound like things are progressing too fast, given that it's been an issue since at least 2016 and it's been a complaint for the last thirty years. As far as I know, there's no timeline. So I think the next issue would be to talk with John Donnelly. He's gonna be closer to the governor's office against his face than Topeka than anything. At least let him know that we want to have a voice in this and suggest in that there are parties that want to participate. I don't know because he represents the district. Though whether we're gonna run afoul with what they want to do, I mean, he's gonna have to represent his client. I mean, that place that I talked to Carolyn, that's nothing but formally, nothing to interact with.
Can I continue on this, Matt?
How are you gonna continue it?
Well, it's gonna have to be, first thing you're gonna have to do is, everybody's gotta be on board. So everybody's gonna have to agree with the course of action. That's kind of the problem here is what the city may want to do may be different than, for instance, whether you want to work with GMD Five or whether you want to ask them, be more aggressive. They're taking possession of things. Some kind of solution needs to be worked out, so the solution isn't candid to them. But I don't know.
It's messy, you know?
Well, I mean, the biggest, like I said, the biggest problem is Carolyn's of the opinion that there's, there's no economic benefit to what they're trying to do. People don't come in, she says, "They'll stay in our hotels, they don't spend money here." It's not an aim all year long, bird watching festival, so.
I mean, to me, it's like, it's an economic downfall, but I personally don't think we're doing much good. I really don't think Topeka is gonna care about Stafford County. That's how I feel about it.
She thinks the economic loss is somewhere around twenty billion dollars.
It's huge.
Right.
Ten percent, she says.
Well, that's, that was the point of bringing this up. What Jim was talking about is that we need to do something, not just, I mean, even if we just, a letter of support to whatever organization that we realize this is gonna affect us and it's not gonna affect anybody else.
We've worked on stuff with John for farm bureau, LA type, landowner type issues in the past. And like I said, I suspect he's out of town because normally last week in session, a week after session, those guys don't go back to work. So I'll, I'll keep bugging him and at least try to figure out whether, if they've attempted to work with the administration. Assuming they have, I don't know. I just, I mean, there's a lot of I don't knows right now.
And that's the biggest thing is everything we're working towards here on the local level and trying to be positive and move your town forward and do everything that we're doing is, I don't want to say it's not worth it, but at, at the end of the day, if we lose twenty million dollars, we're the economy around here. We're not, we're not gonna have what we have.
We may be into it and figure out it's, it's, it's all redundant. I mean, if, if that kind of stuff has been shared with the agency and shared with the administration already, then the only thing you could do is save me too.
Yeah. I guess it doesn't hurt to, at least we're doing something about it. What else, John?
That's it. I mean, I, I don't, the more you guys can kind of push, I guess, the county commission on the city park, probably the better. The one phone call I did have with him a couple of weeks ago, he'd acted like we had never talked before, which is, I have a period of cases that he's been involved with. It's been the meetings of the city council before, so.
Right. Is there any way you could go to the meeting?
I mean, I could.
Because I mean, even if one of us goes, we don't know exactly what John knows. I mean, how do you guys go, how can John go on a Wednesday to there?
Totally fine with that. First and what he has and that way the commissioners know what it is instead of, you know.
I think what it's turning into, in my opinion, what it's turning into is attorney and attorney. And I've seen, I've seen the way things have operated and without saying anything, I probably shouldn't. It's just, we need to work together and I feel like we, as far as the attorney goes over there, we haven't been worked well with. Commissioners have been pretty good to us as far as trying to work with us, come talk to us when they need to or when we need to talk to them. And so I think it just comes down to someone's not communicating and it's the county attorney.
I mean, I could go the thirtieth. I've got a trial today, tomorrow and Thursday, and I've got vacation that will follow.
Do we want to see what, if they discuss it tomorrow?
Yeah. If they're, they're gonna talk about it, there's no point in maybe John going if they get back with us, you know, in that time. I guess, I don't think you can go until he's come in.
I mean, I was told that they, they passed the sale of the square to us and then stepped back and went, "No, wait, we can't do this." And I went, "Honey, we'll just wait." You already passed it.
So I mean, that, basically we have to tell you to show up on the thirtieth for it to be available tonight, otherwise you probably will book something else if you end up having to go.
No, I can keep that open.
For the next meeting?
Next meeting of the...
Yeah. Well, I mean, I would at least say we can get with you tomorrow and, and let you know whether that's a firm date or not.
Dakota can direct me to do things too, so you could, you know, you, it could just be a consensus of the council that if we ever heard anything by the week of the twenty eighth or twenty ninth. Then I can go thirty now.
Then at that point, I think we know whether, we'll know if it's true or not.
I know they were wanting, commissioners were wanting to get something done before the Jubilee. Well, if they're not getting the information that they need, they're gonna be ready to approve a lease. Well, if they don't know this other side, they need to know this other side because they don't know.
I think they were still thinking that you guys wanted to be able to...
I mentioned to Anita that I'm, I'm going forward, I'm not changing my plans.
As far as we're concerned, we're doing it. Cause I was informed within the lease that they were going to provide, it would state that they release all liability and everything to the city. They're just the owner and we can make our own rules and whatever we want pertaining to the property that we're leasing. And I said, "Well..."
Seems like a colossal waste of time.
That was kind of my point. I said, "Why don't we just sign that deed over as presented by the court case and the documents we have and go on?" But I respect that they need to get the information that they need and make their decision on that, so.
So did you have to, they have to approve it now?
For them to be able to do what they want to do, they either have to have like a winery come in or they have to obtain a line, a temporary line, wine license from the state. And I, I gave them their information and told them to have that.
Oh, so you're not gonna do anything now?
It's not, yeah, it's not me.
It's organization.
Oh, the organs.
Yeah. I have nothing to do with it. I've just, I've been trying really hard to provide information and allow them to see the information and run with it.
So will we be following up at event time to make sure they have the proper stuff so that they're not operating illegally? Does that fall under you as far as?
I think it falls under the ABC, but I guess I could do it.
I mean, it's our event. If we're letting someone come in, we should make sure that they've got the proper documentation before they set up at our event.
I'm in contact with them if they have any questions.
I've been in contact with Barb. I've been in contact with Barb.
Okay.
She, yeah, we've contacted or communicated several times about what is needed, so I'm pretty certain they're not gonna do it without having the proper.
That group, I don't, I think they'll be good, 'cause you have to post that, right? You have to post your license, like on the table, I know we do.
I gave them the name and the number.
Cool.
Not my due. I'm working on it.
I had a question that, I had a, I got drilled today by a citizen that said that they're upset about having to have certified letters for the mowing, is that, is that something we have to do? Just they were upset about the cost?
Yeah.
I mean, when you start sending those out, piece, I mean, we're looking at some.
Jamie, I looked at that this afternoon, it just says mail or by person, I guess it's just been.
So if we do that, and we go, we send our guys.
And it just has to be done once, and then if there's subsequent violations, you don't have to do it again.
Is it once per year, or does?
Yeah, the statute says it starts over January three, so.
So as long as we send them a letter by hand or by regular mail, and we go on the property ten days after and mow it, and something happens, we've got proper documentation that we were.
Yeah, I think you just keep, keep a copy of the letter and keep a list of people that already been notified.
I mean, how do you guys feel, I mean, I don't think we need to be spending certified letter money.
The only reason we sent certified is because that's how Pam was taught, I mean, that's just, we were, yeah, Pam said that's how they were doing it before, and at one time, we had the police, what was it, last year, we had the police department serve them.
Is that something you would entertain doing, if the girls got the letters ready from the guys' list, and you guys could take care of that?
Yeah, 'cause that was, I mean, that was our idea last year, because I didn't feel as appropriate to spend eleven or twelve dollars on the letter.
Yeah, and I think it's just.
When we're out of control and in a good service, so.
It's just the person that's in, in possession of the property too, it doesn't have to be the owner, so if it's a tenant, it's efficient to mail it to the tenant. But I think that's.
I think that was right, 'cause we ran into that last year.
Yeah.
I forgot about that. Is everybody okay with letting, letting Jamie and the guys out on the street now?
What's it cost to send one certified?
A lot.
It depends, if you send it certified, I think it's almost eight dollars, and if you send it certified, return receipt requested, it's almost twelve.
And how many do we send out?
We've sent out quite a few.
Last year, I think we started with sixty.
And I'll tell you how, I'll tell you how efficient my office is, David gave the letter, and I think Jen had him sent out that day.
Well, the thought, I think, wasn't that because Jubilee's coming up, and they wanted to get the ten days in so they could have a couple of days to get in stuff mode?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm okay with that side of it, but we can find a better way to get those sent out without spending all the money, I mean, that's just a, that's a policy thing, and that's before your time, and if that's the way things have been done.
It's something, I don't know how you guys feel about it, but about when they go out, whoever's doing it, going out and looking at these yards, I remember last year seeing a couple guys going out and doing it, I just, I think we should just have one person going out there and doing it.
I think that's up to the supervisor, we put the trust in the supervisor to do their jobs, and if one guy's driving while one's riding, they're going down the street, I don't know, I mean.
I'd just see one person. I, I wouldn't think our supervisor would handle that.
Right.
So I, I hope he does, I hope that is not the case.
He's like me to put in order, I'll put in order.
I mean, that's how I feel about it, there's no way to paint two guys, I mean, you could just pull over, look at the yard issues.
I mean, I, I get it, I know where you're at, but.
It says, the order, it says owner or his or her agent in charge of any premises. My assumption is that anybody that's a tenant is probably in charge of any premises. So I think it's sufficient, you can just send it to, to that address, or post it. Were you doing, what were you doing, door hanging?
Yeah, la- last year, they ordered door hangings. And Adam had messaged me about it, and then by the time, like I said, by the time I even knew the, I knew David was going out to him, I didn't even know he had brought it back in, and the letters were going out.
Yeah, I mean, the worst thing that could happen is somebody, I mean, it gets put on their tax roll, and somebody charges or, or challenges, it'd be put on tax rolls. The point is to get the property, so I'm like, no, most of those things, it goes to tax sale anyways, you know.
Right. Anything else for John? Okay, still, I think Lisa's supposed to be here in a couple minutes. As far as, as far as my section goes, I really didn't have anything other than, I don't know if people were made aware of the issue out of the grocery store site, where the contractors doing work out there hit our electric conduits that we put in, snagged a hole in it, I didn't know how we were, I, I wanted to leave that to Jeff to kind of talk to us about that, but I know there's some cost associated with that, and if we're gonna eat that, or look to do something about that, I don't know, but I wanted to put it in your guys' minds about that and what you felt like. Normally, if we were to hit something, mess something up, our insurance or we're gonna pay for it, but I don't know the full situation, so I wanna hear what.
What do you know?
I spent an hour out there tonight, just before council meeting.
Coming out there a couple times.
Our first mistake is, is that the city put that in without any plans, and I put it on private property instead of an easement, where it should be.
Right.
And now we're going back and we're having to move it and put it down deeper, and we're putting it, all of the city's wire and conduit, the ten or twelve thousand dollars we spent is gonna be under six or seven inches of concrete now. So in the future, if we ever have problems, we're gonna spend that money again to go out around on the outside of the easement, where it should've been in the first place. I can tell you right now, the general contractor with the store, and as Davis stated, everybody else working out there is not very happy with our city superintendent and the way things have been handled, and they're not real happy. I mean, there's a six-foot trench out there right now that is wide open, and if it rains tonight, guess where all the dirt that we spent all day digging is gonna go, right back in the hole.
That, it was, it was five foot in the property line, they're having to move, drive, they're having to go around our junction box that is sitting there for the primary, because it was put five foot on the grocery store property, and, yeah, there's, there's no, there's no reason to blame anybody else, because our pipes are on the grocery store's property.
Right.
It's, it's not their fault.
Well, I mean, I, I get that, 'cause they were marked, even if they're on the wrong, wrong thing, they were still marked, so, but I get where you're at, I get where you're at.
Yeah.
I mean, they were marked.
But they were also told that that was not gonna work when they first installed it back in October, that it was not gonna work where the city put the.
And that's knowledge that I wasn't given.
Nobody, I wasn't given until tonight.
Right, well, yeah. Nobody talks to the mayor.
Normally, that stuff is buried five foot deep.
Right, and it wasn't.
It was buried three foot deep.
Sure.
So now they're having to dig it all up, bury it a lot deeper, and put a junction box in, because once you bury it deeper, the wires can be shorter.
Right. Well, and I, I, that's, that's the reason why I wanted to have this discussion, because I was made aware of just a few things, and I'm going, I need to put puzzle pieces together. So.
So what, you said, what were Marshall, if you were out there, you said they're looking at keeping it where it's at?
No.
Going deeper?
No, what, what Chad and Kevin Davis, because last Monday, Jeff was told that they need to pull it all up and move it out on the easement. Well, that, that creates a problem for the city, because everything we bought gets thrown away now, and we have to buy new again, because it's not long enough, and you don't just splice that big stuff together.
Right.
So what they come up with was, we're gonna move it in closer, more on private property, and bury it six foot deep. By moving it in, it takes up and gives in enough slack to not have to put in any boxes and not have to cut anything, but that's what was supposed to be.
So that was their, that was the contractor's solution, instead of going the other route, ripping everything out?
Instead of ripping everything out and spending more money with the city.
I mean, 'cause if they were, if they don't want it in there, then that's our goof, and we're gonna have to fix it.
Well.
I mean, I'm okay with trying to find the best solution, but I mean, we have.
That, that, that was their solution to save the city money.
I appreciate that.
But it has taken, this was brought up last Monday to them, this is when it all happened, was last Monday, when they hit the line and said, we need to do something. It is now Tuesday, eight days later.
Right.
And they just started on it, which is put Comfort Pro, Kansas Dirt, Davis Electric, the general contractor, the concrete people has put them eight days behind.
Sure.
So us not taking care of the problem efficiently and quickly enough has put five other people that have wasted eight days are not getting their job done.
Sure.
And they're not very happy about it.
It, it, it doesn't look good on the city when we're holding everybody back, costing people a lot of money.
Absolutely.
You know? I don't know where our leadership is, but.
Does anybody know what the reasons why Jeff is dragging feet, if that's what indeed he's doing?
I mean, I had a complaint from an individual north of town where our ditch goes right there to go out to the Rattlesnake Creek, and he said he had talked to Jeff on Friday, and this last Friday, it still wasn't cleaned out, where there's a bridge, it just gets all caught up with weeds and trash, it was about five, six foot of just weeds and trash, and he says, this is why you guys' city water don't go anywhere. And he said he talked to him Friday, and Jeff told me to get it out there Monday, and wasn't out there Monday, and he told me about it the following Friday, so it took a week, and I got ahold of Jeff and David, and David went out there, within twenty minutes got it cleaned out, but I just, I thought we looked pretty bad when he got told he'd, we'd get somebody out there Monday.
Right.
So I think we need to, we have to talk.
Brakers delegation issues.
I just, I, I think the grocery store thing needs to be priority number one, 'cause you're keeping five people.
Well, I mean, that's costing them money, and that's costing the grocery store project money they don't have as well. I, I went out there and looked at it.
I was out there.
Before Marshall was there. Was out there today, this afternoon, watching them dig, and talking to a couple people, so.
So who's moving it?
Council, council okay with the proposed change that, working with the contractor to put it in six deep, or six foot deep and in more, or?
Well, I don't wanna spend another twelve thousand dollars.
I understand that, I'm just saying, is everybody okay with that solution? 'Cause again, like you said, it's gonna be under concrete, and then if there's.
I think the general contractor has, has said that that would be sufficient enough, it would be out of their way, everything they're gonna do is above it. It's just, you know, if there's an issue down the road.
Then that's when we get.
We're not tearing out concrete to fix it, we'll just have to.
Run the other.
We'll just have to pay for new and go out around it all.
Well, it's cost twelve thousand dollars an hour, it costs twelve thousand, twenty years down the road.
Well, yeah, well, but it's another how many days to get stuff in and get new line down to there.
I mean, that's the thing, we ordered that wire, and that.
Right.
So I mean, are we, are we doing that, we're moving it?
Right, we, we, they had supervisor or superintendent was out there today with two employees, digging and, and trying to get it open so that they can do what they need to do on it, as far as that goes, but, I mean, yeah, we are paying, I don't know, seventy dollars an hour worth of wages on three employees out there too, and, I mean, it needs to get done, so I will speak with him in a moment. That it needs to get done. If everybody's, has any other direction?
I don't know.
Okay. Anything else, back to John.
I think I got that.
Yes, we're, we're already discussing that.
Right. Okay, on, technically now, on old business and pest control.
Forgive me, my mind is everywhere but organized.
You're the, you're the city painter, the city landscaper, you could be a city pest person.
Some of that paint older than nineteen seventy-two. She ain't even wearing masks.
Watch it.
Well, thanks for doing.
Okay, so I have the proposals for the pest control somewhere. Hey, right here. Okay, so, someone probably understands this a little bit better than I do. This is the current, I have a.
City office, what center?
That's the current, whatever, for the termites. This is Jaren's proposal for the general pest control, pest spraying, they kind of talked, both companies talked about doing it quarterly. And then this is, so this is the termite from Kansas Pest, and then this is Advanced General. And I had it on a nice little spreadsheet, but.
That's, that's, that's the current, this is the new bids for both, that was the current from what we're doing, this is the new bids from the two companies, correct?
Right.
Okay.
But this is, this is Jaren starting termites of his own, so it would be a little bit more expensive to get started with him.
Just started what we currently got over there.
Correct.
To start in as well.
Yeah, he has a little letter, and then his stuff is behind.
Some of that stuff we'll treat for termites, yeah, so it would probably be some of the other, uh, new, new activations.
Not all of it. Do what?
Advance probably would be doing some new, uh, termite places, I mean, they haven't treated everything before, have they?
I.
Every location.
Well, no.
I think we were talking about the scout cabin.
Yeah, out there.
Right, this is, this is like to spray and stuff as well, they both quoted the spraying side of it, and then this is to install the center corner, the termite stations, and it shows where that would be.
I don't know if they added the other termites.
That's eleven hundred dollars for him to do the termite stuff, and for the first year.
Right.
And this is eighteen hundred for.
General spraying.
Just general spraying, and that's for.
Quarterly spraying.
Yeah, eighteen hundred a year.
Which, that's a new expense, I don't think anything's ever been sprayed.
He does spray the.
He does spray the fire station.
'Cause we have an infestation of spiders out there.
Yeah, okay, so.
So if we don't get that thing sprayed, then they're all up in our tears and stuff, and that's not good for anybody.
Like a swimming pool, and probably like the Boy Scout have more general spraying, I think you could probably get away with like one or two.
This is in addition to what they're currently doing, that's the spraying.
You know, during the warmer months.
So that would be the term, or the spraying.
This is the spraying.
In addition to the termite stuff that they already do.
So the termite stuff they do is four or six.
It's just two of them.
So it'd be just.
Four hundred and two ninety.
Four hundred and two ninety, which, that's just the maintenance of them, correct?
Right.
We've already paid for the base station.
Yeah, and then I think Jaren has the price for how much it would be per year.
Right, he's four sixteen and two eighty-eight.
They're pretty even.
Or, no, one sixty-two and two thirty-four, so he's actually cheaper on maintaining.
Maintaining the center horn of the termite station. And then I look, kinda like the spraying, just looking over it.
You're just using Advance or Kansas Pest?
Spray looks about the same.
I think as far as the spraying goes, the spraying goes, it seems like the spraying is about the same for both of them, but, you know.
Well, I understand.
Maintenance is lower.
Maintenance is lower, granted, we're gonna have a little more upfront cost, but in the long run, it's gonna pay for itself.
Sure.
Cheaper maintenance.
Yeah. Kansas Pest is a great job for local, maybe earlier in town.
Well, and we went with Advance, because that's what we had, not available.
Right, I think in the past, we haven't had it.
And now that we've kinda got some local.
Actually, I think Advance had bought out the last spraying business that was in town, if I recall right. I think that Mike Urban had it.
Right.
I think they bought him out. I would make a motion to go ahead with Kansas Pest on everything.
Sure.
Which is what, eleven hundred, what were the numbers? Which is what, eleven hundred, what were the numbers on that?
The eleven hundred dollars for the initial cost of installing the new bait stations in addition to the annual total of eighteen hundred dollars to do the quarterly spraying and general pest control. Annual total.
What did I say?
It's a motion and a second, any other discussion?
How long is that for?
It's a year, isn't it yearly?
And I, I believe that, I know Advance talked to me, it might have been Jaren too, talked about like the swimming pool and some of those things that aren't used year round. We can maybe look at not actually having to spray year round as well, so it could even be a little bit cheaper.
Coming under that. Any other discussion? Motion and a second on the table to accept Kansas Pest bids on the new system and the spraying. All in favor? All opposed, carries four oh. Okay, continuing an old business, ordinance ten fifty-two dash eighteen, ending chapter three. Back to John.
I think you guys just wanted to consider it over the two meetings.
Right.
There was a discussion about lowering that permit from six hundred to match the other.
Has anybody entertained any comments from anyone in the community regarding this change, as we've talked about it a couple of times?
Nope.
Can't say I've heard anything bad about it.
Does anyone have any issues with potentially making a call on this?
I guess my only thing is, is what was the fee? Because the fee was, I thought it was tremendous.
He had it written down, six hundred and I made a move.
Was it every two years?
I think I wanted it lowered to two hundred, don't want it to say even one hundred.
And it's like every two years, correct?
Yeah, it's something they apply for every two years.
With the city?
With the, with the city, right. And I would just do it to match the other one.
What was it, what's the other one?
No, it was the C and D.
I think it's only a hundred dollars, isn't it?
Um, this one says, for a general retailer, it's a hundred and fifty dollars per calendar year. And then a limited retailer, fifty dollars.
So what, what's in that process of the, them renewing it each year, what's the reason for them having to do that? Do you know?
Uh, assuming it's just a means for you guys to regulate it.
Just to check, to approve it, you know, if things are going on.
Make sure we had four hundred thousand complaints and fights over there.
Right. Right, we can decide whether to...
Do it alcohol or something.
I mean, you can't really stop it because it's state law.
Right.
I mean, if they're gonna, if they're gonna have to renew it each year, I'd rather be pretty business friendly if it's a pretty quick process and do a hundred dollars.
I think that would be more than fair.
So do you want to do the biannual license fee in about two hundred then, or do you do biannual amount?
You want it a hundred a year? Because then it'd be two hundred every two years, because we do it every two years, so we're...
I think it'd be good to have, do it every year in case we have issues with the machine, a hundred a year.
It just, the reason why it's biannual is just because that's what they apply for the state.
They do it, that way they do it at the same time, they have to...
Right, it's, it's a state issue that they're trying to manage.
I don't suppose there's any prohibition from you doing it annually, I just wonder if...
I think it's probably better on them that they do it all, all at once.
Well, I like the way you're thinking, if there is any issues to...
Right, but they still have a license through the state, whether we say they can do it or not.
What do you mean? What's, if they don't have a license with us here, they can't do it in the city limits?
No, they could, that's, that's...
So what's the point of getting a license with the city?
That, that's what I mean, it's, it's, you're able to, uh, try to help them renew it.
I think by law, you can go get a license through the state of Kansas, whether the city allows you to do it or not. And you are licensed to sell it through the state, whether the city approves it or not. So really, other than us knowing that they're selling alcohol and paying us a fee so that we allow them to...
Yeah, paper trail.
And you make sure that they're not in conflict with the new zone.
Right, that is the biggest thing is, that is that there's no conflict with zoning or prohibited areas, so. I mean, the state's not going to allow someone to sell alcohol across from the school, they won't allow that.
Right.
You know, this is for us to say, well, you're next to a church or next to the bank or next to the...
Back to, it's another piece of revenue for us.
Exactly.
And we are a business as well.
And the only reason why we're adding this is just because you're not, you don't have it. You have zero, zero alcohol beverages and retailers, you do not have any kind of provisions related to...
I think you would do it business friendly and it's a hundred dollars for every two years, it'd be done with it.
Everybody okay with a hundred dollars every two years?
So we just make it business friendly however it works.
Yep.
There would need to be a motion to amend the ordinance and then a motion to adopt the amended ordinance.
Well, I would make a motion to amend the ordinance to reflect the changes of a hundred dollars every two years. Right?
All we're doing is changing it.
Okay, right.
So, okay.
A hundred dollars every two years.
So you're just changing the license to make it section two to a hundred dollars.
So a motion and a second? Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, carries four oh.
I'd make a motion to approve ordinance ten fifty-two eighteen.
As amended.
As amended.
Having a motion on the table to approve ordinance ten fifty-two dash eighteen as amended, have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, Sanders and Bryant, any other discussion?
The only problem I have with this is that we're not going to have any chance to say, oh, you can't have it here besides, besides the school now.
Right, it was just the schools, you know, they love it.
Yeah, but... So what you're saying is they're going to be able to, they're going to be able to serve zero alcohol beverage anymore.
As far as in the retail setting.
It was, it was so many feet from a school, church.
But you're not going to let a restaurant, you're not going to let a restaurant go pop up on, you know, West Third Street. And, you know, you're not going to allow that to happen anyway, so, I mean, but... Yeah, we need to be, I think we do need to be business friendly as more as, it's another way for these people to attract business and generate revenue, but again, like Marshall said, they can go and get a license and do it whether we say it or not, to an extent.
But isn't that also the reason, like, the reason they have to come to us, so you guys can regulate?
You're, you're just making, I mean, part of it is to make sure that they are following or zoning.
So you guys still really have the final say of where it can and can't be.
Right, the only thing is like the existing businesses, we don't have any control now over the existing businesses, they're already there. If we approve this, they can go ahead and do what they're doing, but any new businesses will still be able to kind of regulate that if they try to come in and they're not properly zoned or...
Yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, if you've got somebody that's selling alcohol within a hundred twenty feet, that's not a per se change in zoning, zoning would be a grandfather name. I don't know, I'd have to think about that, I mean, you don't have any issues now anyways, but they went to renew and all of a sudden you say, now you can do it, three hundred yards.
Right.
And I, I think when they renew, they, they lose that building, so.
There's nothing we're going to be able to do, I don't know, I just want to make that note.
Now we know.
Okay, have the motion and the second on the table, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, carries four oh. Moving on to handbook update.
Um, John reviewed it and sent it to me and I will be forwarding, um, his recommendations to the committee who will in turn review it by next council meeting.
There are two things, changes throughout sometimes.
There is a few, I mean, so you guys can meet, maybe meet back before next council meeting, but...
Yep.
Yeah.
Come up with a date that works for you, I'm available in the evenings like usual.
Yeah, probably late evenings.
Right.
I, I told her just to send my email so you can see kind of, turn away when I issue it.
I'll just forward the email to you guys and...
Sure.
So will I get to see it before the next meeting?
Well, you'll get, it'll come in the packet.
Yeah, they'll, they'll review it and then you guys will have to go over everything and then adopt it.
And you're going to, you're going to remove all the clerkage and stuff?
Yeah, I guess.
And then my only last thought is, some of the, the language in here is, is, it can be cleaned up a little bit, so I'd want to take like one of my editorial.
Sure.
I might add definition sections, like, I'm sure using different terms doing the same thing, but it's not...
Clean it up and make it more official, I understand.
Be easier for you.
Sure.
And it's not easy to read.
Yeah, we'll get Jamie on that. Have a committee meeting and present it back to her so she can get it out to everybody and talk about it next week.
And I'll update, um, department heads on the recommended changes that John is coming back to you guys with, so everyone's updated.
I mean, I guess, I mean, we've got two department heads here, uh, one's missing, but, um, I've heard a little bit of talk amongst employees that we're just coming in and blowing things out of proportion and getting rid of a bunch of stuff and doing whatever, and that's completely false, so I would like you to direct your employees that that's not the case, um, I'll get Jeff in on that too. I don't get where that's at. Well, I have here, I wanted to put that out there. And it, it may not be with your departments, but it may be with, with the shop department, I don't, I don't know, I don't care, but not coming out, we're just doing our jobs, trying to make things better for our employees, that's our job. So just want to let you guys know that, right in front of everybody and...
I'm just excited it's going to be updated and I know, well, that's a follow-up.
Sure, okay.
Phil, you've been doing, dealing with this.
Yeah, it needs to be, well, and once it's cleaned up and every year when we review it, we can quickly review it and go, hey, what, what hasn't worked, what needs to go, boom, done. We'll be setting our own cost basis. Without any other old business, we'll move on to new business.
Do you want to get Lisa first?
Oh, yeah, that's right, sorry, Lisa.
That's okay.
Let's jump back to Department head committee reports, Grand Administrator Lisa Cornwell.
Um, the Golden Belt Foundation wants us to get that money spent. Um, and you know, it was originally twenty thousand and now they'd like to give us twenty-five or thirty thousand. And they would like it used for lighting, playground, ballparks, disc golf, splash pads, green space, health and wellbeing of youth, and they want visible recognition. And so if we do a splash pad, they would like it out where, not within the pool, where it could be used for a longer period of time during the year. And so I would like some, um, direction as to what you would like to do with that money. I don't want to just let somebody else have it.
Right, um, biggest thing is with the splash pad being out in the open, what are the liabilities with that?
There isn't much, that's the way they are in most towns.
That's what I've seen.
Like, you know, um, Lord Davis is on the board and her idea was to come down from the, and I don't know with our water thing, whether this is something you want to do or not, but come down from where the shelter house is, down from there, cut into that, put a splash pad there, I don't know how big, like fifteen by fifteen, and then have a retaining wall build up and two benches and not have anything that would break, just have the little splashes like they do at the state fair.
I think she talked like Great Benz, doesn't, doesn't Great Benz just kind of have some stuff?
They have other stuff too.
Oh, do they?
But the state fair just has the, you know, the little things. And there's a, I know Larnar, they have a pole where it's available like from ten AM to six PM or eight PM or whatever, where you can push the pole for it to be activated for X number of minutes.
Right, and that way you're...
And, um, the suggestion was that we didn't have our guys do it, that we have contractors come in and get it all done. And so there wouldn't be anything except for...
Whose suggestion was that, was that theirs?
That was their suggestion.
They wanted it?
Just to get it done.
Right.
How much does that cost us though?
Uh, we go within the thirty thousand dollars, it wouldn't cost you anything. Pardon me?
You think it could be done?
She said it could be, yeah.
I mean, where, where I have a problem with it being there is that, uh, we'll be taking away from our pool.
Our pool don't make anybody...
No, but I'd rather, I'd rather it being there because I, I'd hate to lose kids.
You're not going to, you're not going to...
We're not going to lose kids.
Kids will play there and go to the pool, then run back there and then go to the pool.
One of the things that I've talked with several people who are parents, they love the idea of a splash pad coming in. They think it'd be great and it's not going to take anybody from the pool.
Would you, would they possibly maybe entertain, you know, we do have that area in the pool.
They don't...
If we changed the fence in?
The fencing.
And maybe put a gate in so the kids at the pool could open the gate and go out there and use it, but then also public could come out up from the side and use it as well. That way we have all the infrastructure and water there that's treated. If it's, that would then be open, but there would be a gate.
And you can just use regular water, you don't have to have treated water in those.
Yeah, that's... Would that be something they'd entertain maybe?
Or would you prefer to get rid of the...
Playground?
Playground equipment, that older playground equipment that the prison put up, put in something new in there?
Which that has been brought to my attention here in the last week of the playground equipment just kind of getting older and...
Or would you like me to bring two proposals back to you?
I think we certainly need to move forward with that.
Get bids on two different things and bring two proposals and then you can look at them and decide?
I would say we either look at the splash pad or for updating the equipment at Brown Park, the, the place up there. I mean, I, I see a lot of people up there during the summer time.
Sure.
I mean, we have a, we have a list that you just read off to us that I, I'd rather see it used in that way like you just mentioned about fixing up the old playground equipment that we have. But Lisa, you really think we can hire somebody for around thirty thousand and have it done?
I...
The, the splash pad, you really think so?
I don't...
I, I'd like to see the quotes.
I, I mean, I can get you quotes.
I would say...
I think just the flat, I mean, I think doing that without all the...
Doing the basic type of one would be...
Yeah, because it would just be to serve us a little deal.
Thirty thousand fifteen by fifteen, you ought to be able to...
Yeah, personally thinking, if it went over ten thousand dollars, you know, we've spent ten thousand dollars on it and we also get the money from the Gold Belt Foundation, right?
Pardon me?
I mean, if, if it costs, you know, forty thousand and they gave us thirty thousand, you know, it costs us ten thousand to have a splash.
But we'd know it in advance and you could say now, we'd rather do the piece of playground equipment than do that.
Right.
Can you read off this?
Yeah, what, what were they again, that they wanted it used for?
Lighting, safety, playground, ballparks, disc golf, splash pads, green space, wellbeing and health of youth. And they want visible recognition that they gave it.
The green spaces?
The sign in black.
The green spaces was that?
Dirt work, grass.
The ball, the dog park. I'm not for it, but I've had a lot of people tell me they want a dog park.
You know, I have had, I've had people talk about that too and I've had people say that when they take their dogs places, that they actually look, there's, you put it on something and they look on that and they stop at those towns where there's dog parks so their dogs can...
Well, because you don't want to stop on the side of the highway, you have your dog run across the highway and get in, I mean, just little things like that.
So people coming down two eighty-one might just want to stop just for that.
Sure.
I mean, the splash pad, it, it seems like a really neat idea, I just, I'd hate to take away from our pool. I think we will be taking away from that. And I know we're not making money at it, but when you got something over here, it's free compared over here, whether it's a dollar or two, whatever they're charging, I mean, or not, it really is.
We ain't spending three million dollars like Stafford on a new swimming pool.
Nobody's going to...
We're smarter than that.
Nobody wants to go to a splash pad all day long, they just like to go there for a little bit.
It's mostly good to be small children who are playing in it.
Yeah.
Well, and I mean, people that host, people that host parties with the shelter roster in the summer can use that as a kind of an, you know, extra thing.
I would be more for this pricing out the splash pad and maybe updating the, the playground equipment up there.
So get a bid on those?
I would like to see a bid on those two.
Okay.
Yeah, because...
Which equipment, which equipment, probably the ones, you know, like...
Pardon me, all of it entered, I mean...
You're, you're going to eat up a lot of that money from thirty thousand dollars with that.
Playground? Playground?
Yeah, for a playground.
Oh, yeah.
You just have to get.
Eat it up.
That little, that nice one down at Cornwall Park, I think.
Laura Davis donated it?
Twelve or fourteen thousand.
Right, right.
I think that's what she said.
It's.
And it's really nice, but it's more for the toddler, littler kids, and so something bigger would be, and then get them installed.
So, all these quotes, are you gonna, you need to know location, we talked about two different locations for the splash pad.
I, I'll see.
Okay.
They'll probably ask him for their plumbing reasons, where do you want it, so I mean, I think it'd be good to decide that now.
Do we have, do we have to have a special?
Well, I would just have it looked at both of them, moving the fence up there at the pool and putting it over in front of, down from the shelter house, those would be the only two places I'd look at it.
Do we have to have any special permissions at the park to put something like that in?
I think the city owns the park.
The city owns the park.
Right, I don't, I don't know if we have, needed anything.
No.
You, you maintain the parks.
Right.
And Brown Park.
County doesn't own that one.
Brown Park is, was just donated, I don't believe there was any, like Cornwall Park, we have like a Cornwall fund, but not with Brown Park.
Okay.
So, is it a deal then where you're gonna look at quotes for each place with splash pad, and then seeing what you can do with thirty thousand for playground equipment?
Twenty-five to thirty.
Okay, let's get thirty.
Yeah. And, um, the AARP grant, did you run that off?
Yeah, it's here.
Thank you, I have a letter for the AARP grant that you supported, uh, for the mayor to sign, yeah, that's a really long shot, but, um.
It's all here.
He gave me a quota twenty-five thousand to finish that.
Oh, no, it's a moment.
So, I'm, I'm sending it in, but I don't think our chances are very good on it, and I'm in contact with KDOT, and the guy that took care of the economic development, um, roadway has left, and so I'm supposed to be talking to Janice, somebody that I've been playing phone tag with for a week, and so there's an economic development grant where if you are providing so many jobs, um, you can provide a road to that place, and I don't know if since we've already got it, whether that might be one, and there's also one coming off the highway, some kind of a, I don't know if it'll just take us to the parking lot, or, but I'm still checking on that, and so I'll get back to you on that next time, and then I'm working on the dog park grant. That's all I got. Sorry, I was late.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, the property by the laundromat.
It's pretty descriptive.
So, um, as most everyone knows, Marshall bought the laundromat and has been fixing it up, and low and behold, uh, the city owns the, was it eight feet?
It's eight feet.
To the south, the city, I guess, owns it.
Between the two buildings.
I'm not really sure why, in the past, it's been maintained by, um, the previous, uh, previous owners, um.
The new owner didn't go and mow it.
The. Yeah.
City don't come mow my stuff, I don't know why I have to mow theirs.
Sorry, Marshall.
I'd just like to purchase it.
Yeah.
I'd like to purchase a eight foot by a hundred and twenty foot strip along the south side of my property. That's up to you guys, what you wanna do.
I don't, I don't think we're gonna do anything with eight by a hundred, other than mow it and maintain it.
Right.
What do you?
Right. Well, we've talked about, Jamie and I have talked about this for a week or so, and there's not really a restriction on what you guys can do to your real property, we don't have the bid requirements and everything the county does, my only suggestion is that it obviously has to be, uh, open meeting, so, um, I don't, council wants him to put an offer in writing, might be a way of doing it, and then have to review it at the next council meeting, council wants to make an offer to him for his consideration.
What's, uh, what was the land assessed on, did you, you told me they.
It's the, the county, when I talked to Paul Miller, they appraised it at two hundred dollars, 'cause he said, we just put a number on it.
Right.
He said, we're not even sure how it all ended up that way, because it was not on the legals for the property that I now own, and it has never been on the legals for the property south of there, and he said, so it got put to the city's name.
Right, it was referenced, I think, what, to the fuel tanks or something that had been there previously.
He didn't honestly really know, he just.
My only suggestion is that you have, if you're gonna sell to Marshall, you have Marshall track down the last deed of records, so that, and, and that you offer it to him by quick claim deed, uh, so that no title work needs to be done, and, and I don't have to track down a deed, and then, then a quick claim deed can be prepared.
I'll do the quick claim deed and everything, I've done it on the business that I bought, so.
That saves you on any kind of fees returned dollars for the property.
So, if he took care of the fees, how much do you think those fees are, we're gonna be looking at for that?
Would you give us?
Well, if he, if he wants to prepare the quick claim deed, he can hop on the traditional council website.
I mean, just, I'm, I'm just kinda thinking, if it's assessed around two hundred bucks.
Yeah, if he, if he only had the, the filing fee for the, the quick claim deed, he provides the quick claim deed to the council, and it doesn't cost the council anything, it doesn't cost the city anything.
So, it'd cost him, I mean, I'm saying, like, if it's assessed at around two hundred bucks, let's say, he should probably be invested in it around two hundred, I mean, could we sell it fifty bucks, would that?
I think you could sell it to him for whatever you want.
I'm, I don't think we need to waste any time on that.
You know, that's not something we have to have more than one.
No.
No, yeah, like I said, you don't have the bid requirements the county does, and even the county's bid requirements, I think it doesn't kick in, it's a five thousand dollars or something like that.
I'd make a motion to sell it for fifty dollars, I don't think we need to be messing with it at all, and I mean, he, whatever he has invested in it, the quick claim, he takes care of all the fees on it for that quick claim deed, and they're like, fifty dollars, and maybe he'll be in it for two hundred, maybe more or less, but.
It wasn't any kind of easement or anything that they acquired for.
No, because Jeff said there wasn't.
I talked to Jeff, and he said, there's no utilities back there for us, and.
It may have been something that was left over and s, and the city picked up in a textile many years ago.
County attorney, or the county appraiser didn't have any idea why any of it, and I, in fact, Jeff, I don't think anybody knew exactly that the city owned the property until I brought it up.
I have motion on the table to sell the property for fifty dollars with all the paperwork for the quick claim deed, but deed at no cost to the city, second on the table, Christie, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
None of them stating.
Carries three one.
Who's being pretty good compliments, I'm fixing that up down there.
Marshall.
The thing, everything.
I tried to.
Jamie, help me with that, too.
No.
I offered.
She's gonna take me out of business pretty soon.
I asked you if you wanted to come help me in the square, dude, you said no.
Okay, no other new business, I'd move to the executive session portion, entertain a motion. To go into executive session, does it need to be fifteen?
Yeah.
So, four fifteen minutes.
Non-elected personnel.
For non-elected personnel.
Related performance.
Related to performance, any else, John?
To include.
To include.
Council, mayor, and attorney.
Council, mayor, and attorney to reconvene at.
Eight fifty-five.
Eight fifty-three, is that right? Motion. So, move by Christie, second, let's see, this is the second, motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, carries four oh. Reconvene at eight fifty-three. Call the meeting back to order at eight fifty-three. Counsel?
I'd like to, I'd make a motion to amend the agenda and add, uh, some grocery store discussion pertaining to city utilities on there.
So, motion and a second to add the grocery store business to the agenda, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed, carries four oh. Moving on to grocery store. Counsel's thoughts?
I think we need to see about, um, hiring someone to finish moving the city line, uh, main line out of the grocery store, and getting that project finished up just as quick as possible, I know, uh, Davis's had said that they could do it for a thousand dollars.
Pending a, would you entertain that work to be done pending a, a quote for that amount tomorrow in the office? Maybe just print one up, or, or just go with it, not to exceed the amount?
I would, not to exceed a thousand dollars.
Okay.
I mean.
That's just lowering the primary.
That's low in the pri, primary back to.
To the, to the contractor's specification.
And getting it done.
Okay.
So that the rest of the contractors can continue on with their work.
So, do I hear a motion on that?
Is he in a position, Kevin, to let the city know what more needs to be done with city utilities out there, that they can come back and kinda say, now that the primary's been lowered, this is what needs to be done, and this is what's going on, so maybe.
I would think maybe between him and maybe even the general contractor that could get an idea of what else needs to be done out there.
It needs to be solicited, just so the city has an idea of what it would cost to, to finish.
Continue after this main issue here.
The main issue right now.
The main issue right now is getting that done.
Getting that done.
And then from there, we could solicit bids if we.
'Cause you guys can have a, a special meeting real quick if you need to accept a, a new date to finish that work.
Sure. Sure.
I'd make a motion to, uh, hire Davis's at no more than a thousand dollars to finish burying the primary for the city.
Can I motion on the table? Have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table, Sanders and Bryant, to hire Davis Electrical to finish the primary work in lowering that, not to exceed a thousand dollars, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carries three one.
Because their guys report to work at seven. Are they gonna head out there?
Yes.
I'll make a phone, I'll make a phone call this evening.
Wait. Better you than me.
Wow. I'm gonna speak with John on some things following the meeting.
Is that it?
Yeah, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn if there's some other business.
Slow moved, second.
Motion and a second, Bryant and Sanders, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, carries four oh, meeting is adjourned. Good luck with that, Captain.